Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and as you are a Republican, for which you stand, one nation of the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This morning, I'm going to switch things around just a little bit, and we're going to begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, and we will do a resolution honoring Sam Hoskins, and then we will have the presentation by Dana Markle, and then we will recess out of the Board of Commissioners and go back to our original agenda. So with that, roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers, Madam Chair.
Here. And with that, today, we are here to recognize Mr. Sam Hoskins, and I know that there's family here. If you all would like to come to the front here, we would like to read a resolution, we'll offer some remarks, and then if any of you would like to say a few words, we would welcome that as well. The resolution reads, "Whereas it was with great sadness that the Douglas County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Building Security Samuel Sam Hoskins on March 5, 2015, at the age of 64; and whereas Sam is survived by his children Theresa, Duane, Charlene, and four grandchildren; and whereas Sam began his career as a watch guard in the Omaha Douglas County Civic Center on October 15, 1986; and subsequently transitioned to the position of security guard for the Omaha Douglas Building Commission on October 1, 1990; and whereas Sam joined the Douglas County Sheriff's Office as a building security officer on February 1, 2000, where he continued to serve for more than 15 years; and whereas over the course of almost three decades, Sam provided dedicated service in the protection of the employees and the public who work in and visit the Civic Center and Hall of Justice on a daily basis; and whereas Sam was known and loved by employees throughout the Civic Center and Hall of Justice, and he will be greatly missed. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this Board hereby commemorates Samuel Hoskins' long career of dedicated service and does formally extend the Board's sincere sympathies to his families, friends, and colleagues dated this 10th day of March, 2015." I would ask for a motion to approve. Please vote. And with that, I will open it up for comments from the Board, and I just have to tell his family that Sam was definitely the ray of sunshine for this county. Every morning, he would greet us as we drove in to the garage, and he always, always had a smile on his face. And he would, as you were driving off, he would always say, "Love you, girl." And so I will miss that. I will miss that smiling face, but we will always remember him, and we definitely, definitely appreciate his service to the county. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I agree, but he didn't say, "Love you, girl," unless I had my wig on. I can see why he developed the way he did. I had to come over and say hello to all of you and get my condolences, but with all the women in the family, I can see why he behaved like he did. Sam was somebody I'd known for, oh my goodness, all of us so many years, and really was just a terrific guy, and he would be at the kiosk and be places, and I'm the kind of person that leaves, you know, keys around where they shouldn't be, and I leave my entry. I can't get in the building and stuff, so Sam was always letting me in the building, but also giving me, I guess I'd say, on a rate of 1 to 10, 10 being the highest, a 10 in a reading off and a hard time about not having my ID. But he really was a guy that just, honest to goodness, what a wonderful person.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyle. With that, I would welcome the family, if they would like to introduce themselves and say a few words if they feel they can.
I'm his daughter, his youngest. My name is Charlene, and...
That's okay, honey.
My dad, he used to say, "Do what you need to do, and don't let nobody bring you down. Keep your head up." Even though the way he said things seemed to come off real harsh, I know he meant well. Like sometimes I couldn't even ask him, son, I'd just have to be like, "Dad, I just need a yes or no. I don't need a speech. Just give it to me." But I know he loved us, and I know he meant well, and I will miss him because there's a lot of things that I won't get to hear anymore, and I haven't seen him in a year because I've moved out of state, and I didn't want it to be this way. I can't do this.
But you know what, honey? You have the memories, and you hang on to those, okay?
I'm doing Hoskins' son, and I miss my dad, you know? I was close with him, and last time I talked to him was Tuesday of my birthday, and he said he was fine.
I'm sorry, honey.
Yeah, I'm too.
Can't deal with him.
But he was a good guy.
He was.
I'm gonna try to follow in his footsteps.
I have no doubt you will.
I'm the Emma. I'm his baby sister, the tornado Valerie's, but he called me Buckwheat. We love our brother very much. Was he hard on us? He loved to play that basketball, him and my twin. He, he, he had all of us together the best he could, the one fear, the one out of California, when they wrong, phew. He was no joke, but he loved all you guys, and we appreciate everything y'all done for us, everything.
Well, we appreciate you being able to be here today with us.
Thank you.
Now, which one? Because I know my uncle Sonny would be like, "You fool." So I get the talking post. I'm his niece. That was my favorite uncle. I'm from Texas. My birthday was March 5. And he left me March 5.
Sorry.
He was a car wreck about. He's a really, really good uncle, could always got him a butt.
And those are the things you'll appreciate, honey, all the way. We'll live on his memories, and as we will too, we will always remember him.
Come on, man.
And...
Hi.
Hi. I'm Valerie from Texas, the baby of 12 siblings.
Oh.
He was my brother slash dad. I just returned from the law enforcement. He raised me like his kids. It's too sudden. I was on the phone with him, and he went for two, but I knew something was wrong. But he...
Scott.
He thought he was Scott. Scott, Diane. You guys, if you have any problem, just call here, tell Scott for Diane. But any of y'all, y'all was his family, and he... When he was gonna retire, he was coming to... We made plans, cut a house, waiting for him to retire, to come to Texas, because I wanted him out of Omaha and with me, and I am a professional basketball player retired from that. That's who started me. Athletes in the family was me and him, and that was my mentor right there, my education, everything. My kids, and not just my kids, but all his nieces and nephews, his sisters, tried to keep us together, the hard-headed ones, he was rough. He was the father because he took care of all the sisters and brothers because he was the oldest. Some of them was hard-headed, but you know, he stuck with them.
Well, as he stuck with all of us too. There are good and bad, and again, you could be driving in and not have such a great day, and he would just open that up to sunshine for us, so we will remember him, and we again thank you all for being here. We do have a resolution for you all to take with you, and so if you could just come around and shake our hands, we would very much appreciate that, and we appreciate you being here today. Thank you all for being here, and again, as sad and hard as it is, we will definitely remember his smiling face. With that, we will move to a farewell presentation by our Omaha Convention and Visitor Bureau Director Dana Markle.
Gosh, a farewell presentation. I really have just some comments to share. First of all, I want to thank you for recognizing Sam because he was the epitome of hospitality. He himself was a brand, just as a person. Everyone knew who he was.
Yep.
So if we could have cloned him, I know that it would have been, we would have sent the message we all went to send to our visitors. 11 years ago was an interesting time for Douglas County Omaha tourism. The landscape was changing, and quite honestly, it was difficult to find a common thread as to what Douglas County Omaha tourism was. You know, was it the zoo? Was it the new convention center? Was it Old Market? Was it the College World Series? And then, to even make it more confusing at the time, okay, is the CVB part of Douglas County, or is it part of the city, or, let's see, the hotels funded, is it part of the Chamber? So I have to say, today, 11 years later, I am so proud to stand before you and tell you, we just, the community of tourism stakeholders just experienced the strongest tourism year ever in 2014, and that could not have happened without your support. Our funding, the majority of our funding comes through you, and your guidance, your leadership, the manner in which you allowed us to thrive, that you were always there as a body of support. I can't thank you enough. I stand here today with many of our stakeholder colleagues and to basically say thank you to you. This is really not intended to be a farewell to me, it's a congratulations to you, to the community, and to what effort you have led. I want to take a moment just to recognize the executive staff of the Convention and Visitor Bureau. The mayor has appointed Dean Miller as interim executive director, and we have Deb Ward, Director of Marketing, Kathy Keller, the Director of Sales, and Judy, we have to recognize Judy Jurecki, our Douglas County employee. So they are here along with, and please stay standing, along with the CVB staff, I am thrilled to recognize individuals who are here representing Magnolia Hotel, the Doubletree Hotel, Exarban Suites Omaha, the Hilton Omaha, Embassy Suites Old Market, the Omaha Marriott, CenturyLink, Omaha Children's Museum, the Durham Museum, Lardson Gardens, and Dawsland Art Museum. We are all working together as one tourism entity to grow the industry and bring more people to our community. Douglas County, thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to say anything?
Good morning. I'm assuming I need Roger Dixon. I'm with Mecca, and it's 455 North 10th Street. We've got some history here. We go back to some times when we had a little fun, we argued with each other, but I tell you what, what turned out of this is something great, and we appreciate it as far as from Mecca, TD Ameritrade, CenturyLink, and all the hospitality industry, for your support of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, and all of us in general. But I also have to say, we're gonna miss Dana. Good luck. Overland Park gets a good one, so again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back. Dean Miller, the Omaha Convention and Visitors Bureau. I just wanted to say, I know Dana didn't want this to be a farewell, but Dana has, over the last 11 years, we've almost doubled our efforts and our revenue, so it's because of her leadership, her team that she has. Luckily, going forward, we look forward to working with the Douglas County Board. We have a good team, and I just want to say, thanks Dana, and we are gonna miss you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I want to add my two cents too. I've been around in other positions for many years, and I've got to tell you something that particularly Roger will be interested in this, is that we had plans to build up the facility that became the CenturyLink, but not quite as grand, but actually down on 5th Street, right near the river where the old alcohol plant is, so you could have been sitting down there, but you're lucky where you are. And on that note, I really think it's terrific that Dana, you've assembled the kind of staff that you have, we have the kind of leadership that can step in and continue the work, and I think also the kind of cooperation we've had from the hotels, and just really, really a terrific group with this. Frankly, it's just not unlike Omaha. This is how we really prefer to do things, working together, and I think it's terrific. So I hope that you'll, and I know you will, enjoy the support of the county board as this effort moves forward, looking forward to that. And on one personal note, I really want to give credit, and this is kind of funny because I have people say to me, you know, they assume that because I was mayor 30 years ago, that all these things began to happen. Some of them did, and some of them didn't work, like the Civic Center or the arena at 5th and on the alcohol plant, which probably as good it didn't. But the person who really, in my estimation, and who I give credit for, as an elected official, for really pushing what has happened with CenturyLink and so much of the development downtown in that area particularly, is former Mayor Haldob. And people are kind of surprised, but when I drive down that, on the way to the airport and go past the arena, I always think, maybe this should be Haldob Drive, I don't know. But anyway, that's my personal feeling, and I just wanted to never get a chance to really say it, but I wanted to say it publicly, that's where I am. But thanks again, Dana, you've done a great job, and we wish you lots of happiness and all that sort of thing, and good luck to all of you who are working so well together. Thanks.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want, I've had a conversation with Dana, so I won't say farewell to that degree because I'm sure I'll see her when I take my kids down to Great Wolf Lodge. But I want to say my point is the farewell, but more so to the industry, and I hope that being in that room probably about 12 years ago, when at the time Mayor Fahey brought the consultant from New York to really talk about the industry, I've had an interest in that industry, and more so just from the county's perspective, it's probably one of the only economic development pieces that we have a direct recsay in, so it has a special place there. My point in Dana's leaving is to the industry, and I hope that you all use this opportunity as a chance to find your voice, because I think the choose, and I'm sure Dean will do a great job in interim, and I don't know who to pick, but I hope you all use this chance to find your voice, to find the right person to fill those shoes. There were, you know, conversations that Dana and I had back channels of big thoughts, and I hope that you all put your voice into the mix on who that person is to make sure that the industry can thrive. There's a lot of work that's been done, billions of dollars in asset, and really not enough to promote it, and I hope you all chime in with a big force on who that person is that guides that industry in the future. So I think that is a fitting farewell to some of the work that Dana's done to some degree, and you all have been a part of instituted. Thank you.
Thank you. And, you know, Dana, it is a farewell, but it also is a congratulations to you and to everyone who's worked together, stuck with it. Roger's right, there's been some pretty rough conversations, but we've overcome those, and I think we're on a good track. Might have to drive a little farther now for our breakfast, but that's okay, that's all right.
I'll look for you.
Yeah, you pick out the place, I'll be there. But best of luck to you, and do keep in touch. We'd like to see how you're doing. Thanks for being here. Thank you all. Now with that, we will recess out of the Board of Commissioners and go back to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Equalization Meeting Held Tuesday, March 3, 2015, and B, Call for a Meeting and Set Tuesday, March 24, 2015, as a date for hearing on Certified Assessment Corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rule or increased value on property.
Motion to approve A and B.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to resolutions, D through G. Is there a motion to approve? Any questions or comments? Please vote. Let go and try again. Try pushing it again. We'll move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, corrections. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers? Madam Chair.
Here. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, February 10, 2015. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Please vote. Citizen comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to the report from the Director of Corrections, Dr. Mark Foxall.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before we begin, on behalf of the men and women of the Department of Corrections, we send our condolences to Sam and his family.
Thank you.
He will be missed, sorely missed. He's a very good, very good man. You have before you, you have before you the report for February 2015. Enclosure one, administrative services at eight months into the fiscal year, we were over budget. I do the retroactive pay to FOP, Lodge Eight, that has since been rectified by Joe Lorenz. State of Omaha is billed through November 2014, and they have paid 90% of invoices through September 2014. They have audited invoices through July of 2014 and paid audited invoice balances through September 2014, which puts their balance at 627 to 9076. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections in House Programs Collaborate, which we have briefed the Board on in the past, its web-based reentry case management system was officially launched in February. Reentry data from the Reentry Assistance Program, Work Release and Jail Programs is being entered into the system. Reporting functionality is still under construction, so while the data is being entered, reports are not yet available to be generated from that data. That will, I hope to have an update on that in my next month's report. It's anticipated that those functions will be completed soon. Personnel have been, Department of Corrections have been completing their training and motivational interviewing. It's also something we briefed the Board in the past about, having all our officers trained in this evidence-based practice, and so to augment the effect of other existing and planned programs. New hire class also will be receiving motivational interviewing as we progress forward, and additional motivational interviewing curriculum will be developed and implemented for annual in-service training as well as to continue to advance the overall staff skill level. Funding from Region Six has provided an opportunity for CMHC to partner with us to begin providing chemical dependency evaluations at our facility. The service will enable individuals who remain incarcerated due to court-required evaluations to receive the service in a more timely manner if he or she could not otherwise afford to pay for the evaluation. This is good in a number of different ways. A, person gets their evaluation. B, will decrease the amount of time they sit in secure custody awaiting that evaluation. So I would anticipate that that would shorten our average length of stay and open up bed days within our facility. Twenty-four-seven Alcohol Sobriety Program, representatives of Nebraska Office of Highway Safety, Region Seven of the National Office of Highway Safety, and the Nebraska Attorney General's Office conducted a site visit on February 19. The contingent was briefed on 24/7 program progress to date, and discussions regarding the future direction and scope of the program were also addressed. All parties expressed very strong support for the 24/7 program, and the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety gave a strong indication that they would continue to fund the program until it's self-sufficient, self-sufficient from participant fees. That's very good news as well. Nineteen new participants were added to the 24/7 program in February. Two thousand four hundred and seventy-one breath tests were completed as of, in February, there were seven positives, or excuse me, in February, there were seven positive breath tests for alcohol use, five no-shows for testing. Overall compliance rate for breath testing was 99.5% in February, so it's a very good, very good outcome for the program. Eighteen individuals were monitored by SCRAM for a combined total of 368 days of monitoring during February, and this is again under the 24/7 header. There were two violations of tampering with equipment in February, one no-show download data, and zero alcohol-only violations. SCRAM compliance rate was 99.2% in February, so again, a very good outcome for the 24/7 Alcohol Sobriety Program. Work release admitted 59 individuals in February. Work release clients donated 986 hours of community service in February to various public and private charitable organizations. Also rest admitted 78 individuals in February. Those individuals provided 312 hours of community service. The reentry assistance program admitted 20 individuals during the month of February. Corrections programs in-house, 58 individuals were admitted during the month. With respect to pretrial services, 23 individuals were referred for priority prosecution, and 201 bed days were saved in February. Two hundred nine individuals were placed on pretrial release in February, 645 individuals were managed on pretrial release in February with a 96% compliance rate. I refer you to enclosure number four, with respect to personnel. Following individuals were promoted to the rank of CO2, Michelle Bertley, Dorinda Young, Sarah Garland, Julie Klein, Sarah Parks, Jade Malcolm. Congratulations to the officers promoted, congratulations to the officers who received commendations in the month of February. Enclosure number six, admissions, excuse me, there were 1,096 for the month, there were 1,234 releases for the month. Our ADP, our average daily population, was 958. US Marshal population decreased, ICE population decreased, felony population was up, misdemeanor population decreased. Female population decreased during the month of February. There were three individual female housing units opened during the month, however, since that time, our female population has increased, 132 yesterday, and we still have 303 housing units open, and our population hit 1,000 over the weekend, so with the warmer weather, population is on the rise. Enclosure number seven, medical screenings, intake 1,236 for the month, H&amp;Ps or Health and Physicals were 4,257. I think that number's wrong.
I was going to say, how could that be?
Yeah, that number's wrong, so I'm sorry. There's a typo in there, Commissioners. I will have the accurate number and forward that to you. If we did that many screenings...
They'd say, wow.
Yes, we'd be asking to build, and they're not going to do that. My apologies, I'll correct that and send you an update in the email. Discharge referrals, 392. That is a correct number, and that's a very good number for us, too, as discharge referrals are very, very important, insofar as the continuity of care is concerned. Enclosure number eight, mental health, initial psychiatric assessments, 33. Mental health assessments, 110. Mental health infirmary placements, 21. Referrals to community-based mental health services, outpatient psych medication management, six. Mental health and co-occurring disorder treatment programs, 127. Mental health therapy, 47. Long-term psych, one. I will say that our numbers are, I think we have reliability in our numbers, and I think we have validity in our numbers, so you can see the consistency. The charts on the subsequent pages give you an indication of, a visual depiction of the statistics on the preceding pages, and I added a chart also under inmate mental health, diagnosis, and psych medication. So previous reports were three charts, I've added a fourth chart, and I intend to add a fifth chart in the following month, as soon as we verify some of our numbers with respect to mental health. And my intention is to, again, try to provide a more visual depiction of mental health services that we provide, or the behavioral health services that we provide, behavioral health issues that we encounter, so they have, I think that's important as we begin to talk about this issue on a national level. So as you go to conferences, as I go to conferences, and different data are presented, different solutions to different issues are presented, I think it's really good to have a visual depiction of what's going on in this area, so we latch on or we follow up on the right types of programs to address our particular needs, because the mental health issues in all the jurisdictions across the country are all different. They're all problematic, but they're all different, and the solutions to address same are all different as well. So I try to get as much information as I can. I would also just remind you that April 2, in partnership with Region Six and Community Mental Health Center, we're having the Mental Health Summit, and that's going to be held at the University of Nebraska's Community Engagement Center, and those invitations have gone out. And if you need a reminder, I'd be more than happy to send that out. I think that's going to be a very important gathering of decision-makers relative to behavioral health, and encourage your participation if you're able to do so.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft?
Yes. Doctor, when you mentioned motivational interviewing, I think of myself as an employer in interviewing, but I can tell that's not what you mean. So describe what you mean by motivational interviewing.
I'll call upon my Community Corrections Manager to give you a detail overview of motivational interviewing. We talked about this afterward before we come up, so Community Corrections Manager, Mike Myers.
Your translator, you mean, translator.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, the Community Corrections Manager for the Department of Corrections. Motivational interviewing, the name has always been a little confusing to me. It's really about a style of communication. It was an approach that was first developed in the treatment of alcoholics in the 1980s, and it has since gained wider and wider implementation across a variety of disciplines. And it's basically, it can be anything from a 45-minute, you know, conversation, an in-depth conversation about one situation to a 30-second interaction, just basically asking the right kind of question, open-ended questions, encouraging individuals to challenge acceptance of the status quo. It's really trying to get people to be uncomfortable with the way things are for them in hopes that you encourage them to think about ways to improve their situation.
That answers a lot. Thank you. Next, again, Doctor, when you mentioned that the State Patrol is still going to assist with funding the 24/7 sobriety until it becomes self-sufficient, any idea how long that might be, how close we are?
We currently have, in the mid-'70s is about our number of participants on the 24/7 program. We're probably, to get it to 100% self-sufficient C, we're probably going to need to get close to doubling that. We are currently researching some other offenses to add to eligible, to add to the eligible population. You know, we've seen such good success, there's been such good stories personally of individuals who that level of accountability has really helped them turn their lives around for the first time. And, you know, so we're just looking at what's the next best population to take on and grow systematically and not get too big too fast. I would hope that within the next several months, we will be approaching that point of being self-sufficient.
Okay. And the results, you said, are very good. And now this again deals with behavioral health, and we've just a few months started, a month, a few months ago, started keeping track of intakes, outtakes, assessing the behavioral health. Are we seeing any results of keeping track of these numbers yet?
No, we're not. I've got an intern working on that, that recidivism data now. In fact, we just had a meeting about that yesterday morning, so it'll take a little time, a lot of, at 18,000 bookings a year, it's a lot of, a lot of people to get through.
Okay. Would you say it'll take a year or longer?
No, 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 no. I would hope to have some preliminary data by the end of the semester, or for the intern in May.
Okay, well, that's excellent. And what was, you talked about the, at the Community Engagement Center, you gave us a date, and I missed it.
April 2.
April 2. And is that all day?
That is, it starts at one, with the half date, it's going to start at 1:00.
Okay.
I'll send, I will forward that back out.
Please do.
I'll forward that out to everybody.
I have...
You may have missed it in your emails, and I'll get with Joe Kenny from Region Six. He's pushing the invites out, and I will make sure that those get back out as we get closer to the date.
And I have no other questions at the moment.
I would refer back to the motivational interviewing piece. That's excellent training insofar as our staff is concerned and their interactions with the inmate client population, but I also would let you know that I've sent a letter to the Department of Justice, United States Department of Justice, requesting technical assistance for CIT training, which is Crisis Intervention Team Training. That's really something that will augment what we're doing now, particularly as we deal with more behavioral health issues in the facility. I got a fairly warm reception to that request when it was made orally at a conference I was at recently, followed up with the documentation, probably received a letter back, and it's probably not a matter if, but when we can get the technical assistance here to the region.
Now, one last, before I forget. Sometimes Mike gets out of line. Can we send him?
Commissioner Boyle?
Did Ann, did Ann call you this morning or something? Yes, I wanted to ask you, I spoke to Marcos during this, during the meeting, because, excuse me, Dr. Foxall and I have talked about legislation that was, was introduced to, that would shift prisoners from the state system to the county, and I just wanted to ask, I think it's LB 119 introduced by Senator Schumacher, is that correct, or is that another bill?
LB 119.
119. And it changes where, according to Marcos, I appreciate the information, Marcos, where certain sentences of imprisonment may be served, and the hearing was the 2nd, 12th of February before judiciary, and the status is it's still at the committee level, which means it hasn't been voted out. Have, have you talked to or heard any information about where this is headed, or do you have any information that we need to know?
I do not know. I do not know which direction that bill is going.
Okay. And Marcos, we had, we testified, I assume we testified against that, I would imagine. I don't know, I think it's something that's serious enough. I'm sorry, I'm trying not to put you on the spot, you do such a great job, but I think it's something that's serious enough that we need to make sure that we let the Judiciary Committee know our opposition. Apparently, it's stalled in committee, which is a good thing. It sounds good. So, but I just want you to know that we're aware of that, and we're working on it.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thanks, Marcos.
Mark, I just want to, just ask, make sure I'm reading the integrity of these numbers right. So if you, the daily, the average population for the month was 958, and then you go to tag eight. So this month, in the current month, there were 463 people diagnosed, brought in that had some diagnosis. So that's 40 to 50% of the population brought in this month had some type of diagnosis.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then you go down to the, next one that says referral in the current month. So that 127 that was referred out for co-occurring disorder, that 127 is not quite, that 127 could be people that were already in there already. That isn't exactly the balance of the people that weren't.
Correct.
Okay, got it. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Correct.
Okay, so that can include, they could be sitting in there, they eventually got out.
Correct.
You referred them to a community.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I got it. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Kraft?
I'm about to say it by accident. One of the things Dr. Foxall and I talked about yesterday was the fact that we should probably start planning his being able to attend some of the national stuff that's going on between mental health and jails. It's really gearing up and looking like it's going to be a pretty good and viable opportunity for us to get engaged, and I think it would be important that you be there as well. So we start, kicked off quite a bit of the information at the Legislative Conference, and that will proceed into the Annual Conference in July. So I think if we can try to work with administration too, to make sure that he is able to attend, that would be great. Because again, this is, this is one of those things that has been talked about for so long at different levels, and we're all kind of talking the same language now at a national level. And that's huge. And so I think having your expertise there would be very helpful as we begin to engage even further in those conversations, so. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I just want to add my two cents. You're absolutely right. There was a, there were a couple of sessions that I attended, excuse me, one of them, excuse me, just by the title, reducing the number of individuals with mental illness in county jails. And it was a, well-attended, there were a lot of people there. It is a national problem. And there were several, several really interesting speakers, one of whom I would really like to invite to Omaha. He was a psychiatrist from Lexington, Kentucky. And he had a really interesting perspective and a real positive outlook on how things can be changed. So it may be that we can get him to come in as a starter, but I absolutely think you need to be involved at these meetings and your people. It's a good investment. I agree.
Absolutely. Great. No further questions or comments? We don't have need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote. We will now go back into the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Item 1A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, March 3, 2015, and approval, item B, approval of claims submitted for payment processor Tuesday, March 17, 2015.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Next is the consent agenda, items A through I. Any questions or comments?
I see a question. On item B, the Douglas County Sheriff's Office is requesting approval of an interlocal agreement with the Council Bluffs Police Department for forensic lab services. I don't know if there's anybody here from the sheriff's office, or somebody can give us a quick thumbnail of what is the substance of that.
Yeah, so these are just, of course, there's nobody here from the sheriff's office to speak on this, but these are just for CSI services that the sheriff's office has contracts with various surrounding jurisdictions to provide crime lab services. So it's pretty standard.
Is this an ongoing relationship that we've had with them?
I cannot answer that question. I was not involved with putting this contract together.
Thank you.
Teresa?
Teresa, you're at County Attorney's Office. I believe that the relationship with, I believe this is a new agreement between the sheriff's office and Council Bluffs. It was reviewed by Kristen Lynch of our office, and I would direct the commissioner to Exhibit A of that agreement, which outlines the services that would be provided.
Thank you.
Any further questions or Commissioner Kraft?
Yes, and for clarification, we're already providing this service to various communities through the interlocal. So this is an expansion of the agreement by including Council Bluffs of Potawatomi County.
I see.
Whichever way it's written.
Council Bluffs.
Council Bluffs, okay. Thank you.
No other questions or comments?
Motion passes.
Citizen comments? Is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move to presentations. We have one from the state, for the state of public health, presented by Dr. Adi Cor, our Health Department Director. We'll see if our technology works this week.
You need a new computer here, is what I found.
Well, it's budgetizing, although that's building commissioners.
Yes, it is building commissioners.
I'm sure we can find the money in the Health Department.
Sure, sure. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And thank you for letting me share with you again what is the state of public health in Douglas County. And the first slide is really just to tell you again, some of your new members here, to what is the responsibility of governmental public health. It is the reportable diseases that by statutes are being reported to us. And this slide is too big for you to read, and I just want to highlight a few things. There are a few trends that we are seeing actually decreasing, and one has to do with Giardia, and one has to do with Giardia and Camplobacto, and Cryptosporidium. But what you are seeing, what I'm more interested for you to know is where we are seeing some increases this year compared to previous year. And one that really is very time-consuming is our TB. We have this, in 2014, we had 15 positive pulmonary TB patients. And what that means is that not only are we contacting the contacts that that individual has, but these individuals are on a nine-month treatment schedule. And what the Health Department does is actually make sure that they are taking their medication. Often these are foreign-born individuals, so we visit them on a daily basis and do direct observed therapy to make sure that they are taking the medication. Therefore, it is going to work, and we are not seeing a spread of that disease. There are two of the diseases in here that I will talk to you a little bit in more details, chlamydia, gonorrhea, and also the third one, syphilis. But really, why are we looking at reportable diseases? It is because we want to see what outbreaks are in our community, identify them as quickly as possible, put prevention measures in place, or prophylaxis in some instances. And this slide just tells you what are some of the major outbreaks that we have in 2014. You see, we had six outbreaks in regards to norovirus. You see where those outbreaks occur. 176 individuals who got ill from those six outbreaks. We have pertussis outbreaks, where we prophylaxed 20 individuals. We had influenza outbreaks, where we prophylaxed altogether 250 individuals. A hepatitis outbreak. And then what is new this year, we have multi-jurisdictional outbreaks. What does that mean? That means multi-jurisdictional between counties, but also across state lines. And those are always a little bit more encumbering. You see the outbreak of Ebola. You see here our Ebola information line that was put in place immediately last fall when we had the first patient coming into our community. And there was a lot of concern from our citizens, what does that really mean? We put a training video together, really communicated with our healthcare providers. But now I want to go back and again share with you what our Board of Health really decides every year, what are the priority for the Douglas County Health Department. You have seen these five cycles all the time. They are the same, they haven't changed. We added a fifth, a sixth one last year, the ACEs, the adverse childhood events, and I will talk about that one a little bit more. So when we look at all these priorities, we always say, what is the goal of those priorities, and what do the results show us, and therefore where do we need to go from here? What we put also in place is that these are not activities that the Health Department is doing themselves, but we have partners that we respond to. This is our goal that we had in regards to asthma death rate. And what you can see here, our asthma death rate is actually at or even below the national average. So I'm starting out with some good news for you today. You also see that we responded to approximately 510 indoor air quality calls. Those are calls where individuals say, you know, I do think I have a health concern because of my indoor environment. We tried to walk them through, provide them some preventive measures. Then we conducted 58 onsite indoor air quality investigations. That can be in a business, that can be in private homes. Usually these are private homes. Then you see all the efforts that are going on in regards to ozone education specifically. We are starting a new thing that I have had an interest in for quite some time, and we may be a little bit at the forefront of this, to studying what the different, what the impact is of climate change on emergency department syndromic data. Meaning what do we see when the weather changes, when we have higher ozone levels, and then correlate that to emergency department entries? So this is what is being done right now. We hope we have a paper together pretty soon. We are looking retrospective. So when you look at our asthma death rate, as I said, we are actually below the national average. But what was always the issue with asthma death was that we have a health disparity. Individuals in the African-American community had a much higher rate of dying from asthma than in our BI communities. And you see these in three-year averages. I am very proud of what we are seeing now. We are seeing for somebody to die from asthma death across the community is at the same rate. And that is a good thing. And I think that's where we want to be. And so I'm, I'm very hopeful that that asthma death rate is going to stay where it's at. Infant mortality, you always heard me talk about that we have a health disparity in infant mortality too, where an individual baby born to an African-American mom has sometimes up to a threefold higher chance of dying before their first birthday. That's really infant mortality. But when you look at our overall infant mortality rate, it's actually below the healthy 2020 goal. So let's look at that disparity. This is good news too. The top line is our African-American infant mortality rate, and what you are seeing, we are starting to close the gap. And we have closed the gap now over the last three years. Again, it's not only one partner who does this, it's all the partnerships that we have in the community where we have what we call the field infant mortality review, where we look at every death together with neonatologists, together with public health nurses, together with forensic pathologists, to try to determine is there a pattern that we see in our community? And if we see a pattern, how do we need to make system changes to make a change to that? That's really what public health does. It does not look at one individual, but it looks at the community as a whole. You see, one of the drivers of infant mortality is our sudden infant death syndrome rate, and that rate is going up again, as you can see here. So is our sudden unexpected infant death suicide rate. So right now, that female infant mortality review team is looking at this and saying, what are the underlying factors? Is it co-sleeping? Is it that individuals do not recognize what we said over and over? Infants need to sleep on their back, in a bed by themselves, in a crib without all this padding around them, in a smoke-free room? What are the underlying factors that cause? But again, overall, I think I'm very proud about our infant mortality rate. Going to the next I'm not so proud of, and I would love to, to see this data different. But you know, we are driven by data, and that is what the data shows us. It shows us actually that our STD rate has increased and is at the highest level it has ever been since we started to talk about this in 2003. But you also are seeing down here, because your next question to me is going to be, and what are you doing about this? And so there is a lot of activity going on, though more than education going out to more than 14,000 individuals. We have the non-traditional testing in our community, which is testing in public libraries, it's testing in jails. And we see we have 1,550 individuals tested, and we have a positivity rate of 6.9%. That is high. That is really high. But what it tells you is we are getting at the right individuals when we do this. So the next graph is a graph that you have seen, and it is a graph that just should actually frustrate all of us. Because the blue line is the Douglas County STD chlamydia rate in this case. The yellow line is the US line, and you know, you can see nationwide STD, the chlamydia rate is increasing, but it isn't increasing at a rate where we are at. And what you are seeing here specifically over the last year, we have seen a high spike again. Now I want to look a little bit closer to that. What does it mean in regards to race and ethnicity? Because we do know that we have potentially a close to tenfold higher increase in our African-American population. What you are seeing here, you are seeing again a slight increase, but you are also seeing an increase in the other populations down here. When you look at age, this is the gonorrhea rate, we see the same increase. It mirrors what we are seeing in chlamydia here over the last year. Staff is trying to put something new on here, so these slides go in and out, and they think they want to be fancy with me. So this is race and ethnicity, and there again, a slight increase in our African-American population. When we look at age groups, we always talk about where do we need to focus our programs on, and it is in the 15 to 24-year-olds. I want to have, however, a little bit more discussion with you about. So this slide actually shows us, the red light line is the 15 to 19-year-olds. And what you are seeing there, you are seeing a flattening out of that age group. And what you are seeing in the green light is the 20 to 24-year-olds. So really, we could say, you know, some of the programs that specifically target 15 to 19-year-olds, we are seeing some slight success. We are not putting programs in place to really address 20 to 24-year-olds. That's a little bit more difficult age group to capture, but what you are seeing is we are seeing that increasing. Gonorrhea, we are actually seeing the same in our gonorrhea rate. We are seeing the increase even steeper in the 20 to 24-year-olds. So those are individuals who are now in college, who are new in the workforce, who may go to a community college. So we really need to try to identify where do we see those individuals, where can we reach them? This is our syphilis rate, and what you are seeing, our syphilis rate is increasing. Now I do want to tell you, that means 37 syphilis cases in Douglas County. So we are not talking about thousands or hundreds of cases. It's a small number, but still it is an increase. At this time, it is very much centralized in our gay population, it's centralized in individuals, men having sex with men. It's also centralized in our HIV population. So all our efforts right now for outreach are really towards that population. Childhood poisoning, I think I have talked to you several times, childhood lead poisoning is unique to Omaha and Nebraska because of the industries that we have had along the river. You talked about it today, and we can't imagine it anymore, that riverfront has developed so nicely. We screened 17,000 children in 2014. We had 89 children with elevated blood lead levels. 58 were confirmed. 100% of the homes that where we were able to go in and identify the risk of lead were identified. This is potentially a good story too, because when you look at over here, there used to be a time when we had 13% of the young people, less than three years or less than six years of age that we tested, had an elevated blood lead levels. We are now at a level of 0.5%. That is a very low level. Even so, our screening has increased, and our healthcare professionals have done an excellent job in our community when you think that they screened 17,000 children. So overall, that's the positive outcome that we are seeing from the efforts that are going on in our community. And then again, most of the children with elevated blood lead levels are in our zip code areas, that is also the EPA Superfund Site areas, where we also have an old housing stock. And I will show you on this slide. This shows you exactly where do we see EBLs. It is a housing stock that is from 1900 to 1929. So again, very old homes that had lead-based paint in them at that time, because lead-based paint was used until 1978. Obesity a problem, and we are not unique in that, and 62% of our adult population is overweight or obese. We are redoing the community health needs assessment, and we should have new data by next year to see, are we seeing a change in that rate? Lot of activities going on in our community on that aspect, and I'm really proud that we have been able to receive grant funds to actually help us do some policy development and do some system changes, looking at the built environment. What you are seeing here, what we have focused on is really on smoke-free, multi-unit housing complexes, because we know specifically, single moms, that's where they live with their children, and we would like to. their children, and we would like to have that option for them available so that they can make a choice to live in a smoke-free environment. We have 10 healthy neighborhood stores, and I've talked to you about that. Those are stores that really, before, they were in the neighborhood, but they didn't provide an option for individuals to go in there, grab some healthy snacks. And we want to have everybody to have that chance, not just a Twinkie at the neighborhood store. 20 farm-to-institution initiatives, this is working together with the farmers and say, how can you provide local produce to our institution? That could be to a business. We have a CSA at the health center, at the health department, where we actually purchase food during summer from Reddington Farms, where they bring in a bag every week for those individuals who sign up for it. Farmers market, again, this is a really good initiative for the small neighborhood stores to consume and to purchase together. So because by themselves, they wouldn't probably be able to do it. Healthy vending, I will come to you later on this year, because we want to address that a little bit within our county, and specifically, since we threw the effort and push from Commissioner Borgeson, we have just now been included as a county, a healthy county, and so we got a brown star, but we want to shoot for silver next time. Wellness policy changes with the schools, that's a hard nut to crack, but I think we are making some progress in there. Physician-pharmacy link, that has been a pilot that we did under a grant proposal to see how pharmacists can more link up with the physician diagnosis. So when a person comes in and reveals their prescription, and the pharmacist sees they haven't been here for a while, he can ask that question, and why haven't you been here? And where is your blood pressure? And how has your diet been? And so on. So really taking a more active role, but what the pharmacists haven't been doing in the last few years. Six health impact assessments have been completed. Those are the assessments that we do for the city Department of Planning and Public Works to kind of tell them, let's put a health lens on when you develop new projects. By that, that means, you know, do we have sidewalks? Are sidewalks going to be a priority? How should the neighborhood look like? So that we really can all go out and be safe in the neighborhood and have physical activities. Breastfeeding counseling, it is a protective factor actually for infant health, and therefore we have done a lot of breastfeeding with our women who are coming to the WIC Center. Adverse childhood experience, as you have heard before, is one of those over the last five years upcoming issues where communities are realizing that there are other things that we need to look at in a child's development. You know, you have heard that John Janetta talk about this, Heartland Family Services, who is using this trauma-informed care. You may have heard about connection projects that is now going into school to kind of be at the prevention side and say, we need to recognize individuals, we need to strengthen families. I want to start talking about what are some of the resilience that we need to build in our young population? Because we cannot change poverty, I definitely cannot, but I can bring forward what really needs to happen. And it has to do with strengthening families, or if the family isn't strong enough, have mentors in individuals, especially in young children's life. We see that is going to make a difference over the lifespan. So we are going to be looking at it, we are going to look at these spurts, these short interviews that can be done in clinics. We just had a really good presentation at Children's Hospital Grand Rounds last Friday, where pediatricians are starting to look at that and are saying, what questions do we need to ask children to recognize that when a child has had these adverse events, it is much more common that we need to give them a strength to have them calm down? It is like the saying that they use, it is like if you would see a black bear every day, you would always be at that high level of alert. And you and I, we have mechanisms. We may be excited and see a black bear today, but you know, after two hours, we can calm down again. We are not always at that same level. But these children who are in that type of environment, they have that level all the time. So we need to talk more about what do we need to do as a community to really put that resilience in children? Health disparity, I already talked to you about that, how we are trying to address that. Public health emergency preparedness, we have a really good team. I just want to make you aware again, this is completely federally funded. Public health emergency preparedness would not occur if it isn't funded from the feds. So we actually, you, when you go to NACO and some of those associations that you belong to, it's really important that funding keeps coming, because only then can we prepare a community. And that can be a weather disaster, that can be any type of incidence, but we need to have those plans in place, we need to have those connections in place. But again, it's only possible with funding. So I gave us a little bit of rating, and the rating actually created a lot of discussion at the Board of Health. Especially I have now a board chair who is a little bit pushy and decided, you know, we need to be honest with ourselves, and we need to be honest with this community, what type of grade we are getting. And he's smiling over there a little bit. So I think what Commissioner Rogers pushed us to is giving us a D for STDs. Because I do think that is where we are at this time. We have not been able to get over that hurdle, we have not been able to address this in a sufficient way. I think we have a few As here, and it's actually a pretty good report card, but as probably every mother would say, what do we need to do to make this change? Now, I think we all have hopes that the adolescent health initiative that has been brought forward through the Women's Fund and through some other philanthropy in this community is going to help us. That initiative is really a three-prong initiative. First of all, it has the gorilla campaign, you may have seen, you may have seen the individual in a lab coat say, I'm a scientist, but I have an STD. The basketball player who says, I'm a basketball player, but I have an STD. And so it is really trying to take that stigma away and say, you know, everyone can have an STD. STDs don't have symptoms most of the time. The second initiative is really to increase testing sites, because what we heard from forums with young people is, they say, we don't have a way, we don't have transportation to go to the clinics, we don't want to go to the clinics because it's on our parents' insurance claims then. And B, we don't have a car to drive to like, let's say, the Douglas County Health Department Clinic. So that's why again, we need to go to where our young people are. And then the third initiative there is really to make sure that schools provide educational material in regards to sexual education that are age-appropriate, but also time-appropriate. If we have curriculum that hasn't been reviewed since 1990, that really isn't going to be helpful. We know from what the young individuals are telling us, they get a lot of their information from schools. That's actually the number one place, and so it is even more important. The number two place is they are getting it on the internet, which is scary to me. And number three, it is from their friends, and only number four, it is from their family. So you know, whatever we want to say, that family conversation is important around the dining room table. But we also need to make sure that all the other information is important. We'll talk about in 2015, we'll talk a little bit more about the linkages between clinical care and the community, and what we mean there, these are, the Affordable Care Act is really pushing us to get people out of hospitals and make sure that we have the resources in the community to prevent them from going into the hospital, instead of using the emergency room, use less costly programs. We also want to increase and enhance program workflow, data visualization. This has to do specifically with some of the environmental health program that we could see, where do we really need to put our emphasis on? So overall, this is where we are, not a mixed report card for this year. I hope I can come to you once, and I can say we have made even more progress than we have made, but I think we are on a good track. Any questions you have?
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, Commissioner.
Dr. Porter, thank you very much. It was a very good report, very clear, clear language. I appreciate that. I just want to tell you that don't be, don't feel too bad about the B on the report card. I told one of my children, who was a straight A student when she came home from St. Margaret Mary's, upset over getting a B, that I tried to console her, and I said, the only time, honey, that I ever got a B on my report card was when they typed my last name. So anyway, B is very good. And I'm bothered again by the STDs dragging it down to giving a D on that. Are there, you know, we worked on something several years ago, we talked to, went to meet with the superintendent of public schools and so forth. And I can understand the reluctance that some parents have and the fears and stuff. Do you think that, I mean, what is the basis that it's, it's kind of something that parents need to know, that their children need to know, but they don't want to teach it to themselves, they're embarrassed, whatever thing? But so then they, but they don't want to turn it over to somebody for fear of whatever information it is you're getting? So I'll speak for myself, I went to Catholic grade school and high school here in Omaha, and a lot of my education about sex came from kids that were older than me in grade school. And so, I mean, I was aware of it, we were, but then we were Catholic kids, and so supposedly we didn't engage in those things, you know? But anyway, one of my classmates was pregnant when she graduated, and the nuns didn't know it. So anyway, good job of concealing it. But on a serious note, I think there's, you know, I really am very concerned about it, I think, because it has such sexual activity, you know, I have 13 granddaughters, and I've told the ones that are old enough, when I'm alone with them, that if you want to guarantee yourself a life of absolute poverty, I mean, you could get out of it, but it's really tough, get pregnant. And when that happens, things start to unravel. I mean, they just do, the pressures of taking care of a child and all the rest, everybody, we all know about that. So I'm really concerned about trying to really overcome that D status and get it up to a B, maybe an A. And I'd like to be more involved in it, and I think this board, I can't speak for them, but I think this board is committed to that. And I wonder whether we can't, I know that there's a bill in the legislature that was shredded because it had a, part of it dealt with funding Planned Parenthood. And I frankly see Planned Parenthood as a real agent for delivering this kind of information and helping young women, and I wish more young men, probably there are a lot of those too. But in getting the information that's legitimate in a setting that's, that works, I don't know, I don't want to drag us into necessarily a Planned Parenthood controversy, but I think we need to face reality that maybe they are one of the better agencies to deliver this kind of information in a setting that's wholesome. That's my opinion. And so, I mean, I would think that if you would agree, if there's other agencies that could help deliver this service, information, maybe be the buffer, I'd certainly like to hear about it and would be interested in what we could do to support you in any way on that issue. I have another question about the smoke-free buildings. Ann and I moved into a condo that says, you know, we are a smoke-free building, but we're not. We have a couple of tenants who smoke cigarettes. It is a, primarily a concrete building, but the walls are not concrete. And we lived across the street from the mansion that burned, that was started with a space heater. Not smoking, but I really, I am concerned about it. And is there an ordinance, or do you know of an ordinance in the city of Omaha that forbids smoking in a part, this is a condo, but in an apartment building?
There is no ordinance.
Okay. That's something that really needs to be addressed. We see so many of these fires, but that's not our purview. But let me talk to my council member. Then lastly, I want to mention something that really bothers me a great deal. We had a presentation by, it is the trauma information that you brought to us. We had a really excellent presentation, I think it was Lutheran Family Services, I'm not sure.
Heartland.
What was it? Heartland Family. I mean, I was really impressed, and I've heard more about it just as recently as yesterday. I was, on the national news, they were talking about trauma and how it affects people and the higher level of alert that occurs and causes all these behavioral problems and can't go to school and things. And I do think that, you know, the Sherwood Foundation for starters is really, that's the, that's the key to all of this, where they get children as young as two and younger, and their mothers and so forth, involved in programs. That, that's something that I would really support. And I talked to, when the gentleman was making the presentation, I said, what would you do with $100,000 additional? And he said he would hire another psychiatrist, I believe, to begin to start this counseling. And we're going to start working on budgets, and that's something that I'm going to propose. Is that the proper place, do you think, to be putting this money? Should we be talking about giving more to you? What should we do? This is, we need to stop some of this early behavioral problems, and it seems like trauma, from what I read and heard, is culprit.
Correct. And, you know, I don't, I don't, I haven't really thought about this, but a health department is in a unique position in that you can bring all the players around the table. And you can make sure that you have kind of an impact, impact therefore. So to a certain degree, that maybe, I mean, I would say maybe better to provide it to us, not to develop the programs, but to bring everybody together and say, okay, where is the gap, and how do we fill that gap? And then have some accountability. Because what I see so often is people work in silos. And so there are a lot of efforts going on on that. I mean, hospitals are telling us they do trauma-informed care and so on. But you know, nobody has brought them all together. They are all, so that would be kind of where I would go with that.
Okay, well, I appreciate your direction, and I think we should need to consider that when we talk about your budget. So I appreciate that very much. And Doctor, we're very fortunate to have you. I respect the incredibly high level of service you give our community. It's amazing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Doctor, I just have a couple of questions. The wrap-up where you had the grading of the deferred activities included a public health emergency preparedness, could you outline that for me a little bit?
So that is the planning efforts, that is working together. We are what we call CRI, City Readiness Initiative. That means we are the size of a city where within 48 hours, we need to have antibiotics available for our community to receive it. So we need to have plans in place, you know, that isn't easy to do. So that's what these individuals do, they do a lot of planning, bringing people around the table. We have the Omaha Metropolitan Response System, which brings every, once a month, every Monday, the third Monday, I think, of the month, the healthcare systems together and say, how can we talk with each other in an emergency? Because they found out by chance through an exercise that actually, some of the decontamination units that Creighton has, and some that Nebraska Medicine has, don't even, they are not the same, they are different. So they couldn't be used in an emergency where you want to pool resources together. So they really developed these type of systems, and that's what our, what our public health emergency response individuals do. And they get graded on that, on an annual basis. There are all these different standards that they, and I sometimes, you know, call it typical bureaucracy, but it is accountability. Do you have this in place, A, B, C? Do you have this in place? And so through that grading system, that helps us. And we got a grade A from the feds when they came in and they looked at our system for a community our size. So it is all this planning that we are ready to go should an emergency, and that can be a pender tornado, that can be a flood as we had several years ago. We then take those plans and say, okay, this is what we are doing. And that's what I'm doing right now with Ebola. We have this unified command where the police chief, the fire chief, 911, emergency management and Nebraska Medicine, where we come together and have this system that says, what do we need? How do we need to communicate together? And what plans do you have? And the chief says, well, I need some help here or there. So we really work together. Because what you see in an emergency, the one thing that breaks down is obviously is communication. And you develop these relationships before the emergency comes. So the A really has to do with how the federal government graded us here.
And is that the federal emergency communications people, or?
That is FEMA, actually, the Federal Emergency Management Agency.
And that's an annual grade that we receive?
That's an annual grade, yes.
And you referenced this in your comment, that And you referenced this in your comment, that we have an Ebola protocol. I saw some mention of it in your PowerPoint as well. Tell me a little bit about that.
We have an Ebola, we developed an Ebola hotline immediately when the first patient came into Omaha. Because Nebraska Medicine decided that they really didn't have the time to answer now general questions from the public. So, the Health Department opened this line and we got about a hundred calls the first two days or so on. The calls were anything and everything. We made sure before that we actually developed kind of a script for our staff who handled the phone lines, so that we made sure that we have consistency in the way we answer those questions. We also made sure that those answers fit with what CDC response is. We now have protocols in place when we bring in individuals who are being monitored, for example. And I can give you an example. At this time, we do have one traveler, an individual who traveled to some of those West African countries, but wasn't in contact with an Ebola patient. But when that happens, the airport informed us, and the airport, by that, the airport where those travelers flew in, informed us on Friday, actually, that a traveler came in. We now have set up an assessment with that individual over the phone. That individual is a low-risk or no-risk individual, so very low risk. But we want to make sure that we have protocols in place that tell the traveler what we are expecting from him, him or her. And they need to be in contact with us on a daily basis. So, those are protocols that we develop because we are a larger city. And then rural Nebraska is adopting from us. So, that's what I mean with Ebola protocols.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to follow up on Commissioner Boyle's point and say that, that time that we did meet with the superintendent, they made some good progress. They got the YRBS now. And that was a, it cleaned to get there. And through some of the stuff with the school-based health clinics that they're doing with Building Healthy Futures there, they're making some inroads into some of those pieces that you were saying. So, I think they're on a good progression mode. And I know that we've added that strength of knowledge and policy to the Board of Health by bringing Janie Wise onto the Board of Health. So, we'll be able to play a stronger role in that respect of getting down in there. I want to note that, you know, as we, the ACE's circle that Dr. Poore put on there, the Board has a presentation. And I know Commissioner Borgson wasn't here, but we saw the presentation in South Carolina. That, that piece is continuing to evolve for the Board and, you know, beginning to get us on the speed to be more knowledgeable. But, you know, something I discovered myself is that I, I kind of just kept it into youth, but it's also an adult issue. So, you know, I think it opens us up into that whole discussion of what's going on to some degree. The other piece is that 20 to 24 crowd that she noted in STDs, I don't know if some of you all can remember, I know when Commissioner Borgson was on the Board, it was like 15, 18-year-olds. It seems like that group just moved up and hasn't learned anything. And I don't know, you know, I just don't know what to say about that. I mean, yeah, I can remember 24 being a little reckless, but 24 is an age where hopefully you got a better decision-making piece. So, I think we really have to dig into that and go. But I just want to specifically note that point, that when, when the Board of Health declared an epidemic in '02 or '03, that was the age group. And this age group has moved up and hasn't decreased it.
Same.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know. The other piece I just wanted to note too is that, I mentioned it roughly, but I don't want to mention it publicly too, for the last two months, the Board has had these briefings, the Board of Health has had these briefings at the monthly meeting from the health centers. A little bit of it stems from some of the conversation that happened here, but basically, the hospitals have been briefing us on what they've been doing with the community benefit agreement pieces that are in the new healthcare law. And the hope is that, to use this as a baseline year, and I want to invite all of you all, at least for the next two months, it's at eight o'clock, welcome to come. And I sent out one earlier, just to identify everybody. But so far, CHI has come and Children's have come. And I hope as we build the knowledge up enough that the CHIP that's being done now, the Board of Health can get a stronger knowledge on being able to emphasize more what may be going on with those efforts from the hospital to really move the dime on the chip. So, I just want to note that and invite you all, if you all wanted to come over the next couple of months, that I think UNMC and Methodist is scheduled to come. Methodist is this month and UNMC is in April. So, thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes, Commissioner Rogers. You started off with the acronym YRBS.
Risk Behavioral Survey.
Okay. And you used five more acronyms during that, which some of our listeners may not know.
Good catch.
So, you had ACE, which was on the chart, and I don't, I don't recall what ACE meant.
Adverse Childhood Experience.
Experience, thank you. And CHIP, which is the?
Community Health Improvement Plan.
Community, thank you. And I don't remember?
Mandatory by the healthcare law.
Okay, right, yes. Once I hear it, I remember it.
Yeah, good catch. I got into the zone of thinking everybody knows.
But you got to remember, people out there in TV land. Okay, thank you.
Dr. Poore?
The, on the CHIP thing, I just wanted to comment that actually, that's actually taken a national conversation as well because everybody feels there was a rush to do the plan, but now there's a lag in implementing the plans. And so, we're actually trying to get a better presentation at the national level on these so we can see what the successes have been and where the downfalls are. So, it is happening all over.
And, you know, probably nationally and also locally, it's not an easy, an easy endeavor because you are bringing competitors around the table who are working on something that there isn't any grant fundings for it. So, it's their time and their staff to do it. So, I, and then some of the recommendations are just that, they are recommendations. And what are you going to do with it? So, it's a, it's an interesting issue. I think it's a great effort to bring everyone together and work in one direction. And we have some good successes, but I wish we would be further. But the first year, I was kind of trying to find your footing and say, "Okay, and where are we going to be?" I think the second year is going to be much easier.
Yeah. And I do like the approach for the trauma-informed. We, I know that there's been like our Juvenile Assessment Center, some in our Youth Center, they've all been trained and had presentations and are actually using it. But you're so right that it needs to be coordinated. And I think the Health Department would be the place for that to happen. And so, I look forward to some initiative on that. The STD testing, is there a way, I'm always curious as to, while I get that we've not made the quote "progress" that we want, but is that progress also measured in the way in which we've built this awareness, we've increased this testing, so that increases our rates? So, if we would go back and we would see, you know, what the testing was prior to, you know, the Health Department declaring it an epidemic, just use that year, and look at what our rates were, and then all of a sudden we are increasing the testing, does that not have a direct impact? So, we could, I'm not trying to make the D something it's not, but we actually could say that we've actually have made progress by being able to identify and then treat those individuals that have presented with an STD.
And you are absolutely right. And, you know, we knew this was going to happen. Once we bring awareness to an issue, then more people are going to be screened for it, more people are going to be identified and treated for it. But you would expect that after about three or four years, that we're kind of leveling out. And that's what I was expecting. I was expecting a leveling out. Now, the next, next year, under this Women's Fund Initiative, there are going to be seven more grants awarded to increase the testing and treatment into this community. And I said with that one, we really want to measure increased testing, increased positivity. What I would like to see, increased testing, less positivity. So, we need to get there. The issue with STD is that the, in the testing that is negative is not reported to us. So, we only have the positives reported. And that is, that makes it a little bit more difficult to evaluate. Now, in that regard, and if I can just close with this one proposal, I think Commissioner Boyle brought up some good issue about, issues about Planned Parenthood. And we realize that we need to find different partners out in the community that can do different things, that not all of us are at the same level of services that we can provide. But what we really need to look at in our community, and what I would like to see is, who would be a good partner in regards to, for example, condom distribution? I do feel, the more I talk to other cities of the same size, that that is a barrier for our young people in this community. Because the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is telling us that our youth is really not engaging in higher sexual activity than other youth. But I am wondering if it is that they don't have that availability that brings them to, into that high-risk behavior. And especially when I hear that pharmacies are now storing condoms behind closed doors, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, I agree.
So, if you, if you feel this is something, and I will look for the right partners, I know that is not a government function, but I think we all need to be aware of it, you know, to probably change this curve. It needs to happen on all levels, and that is one where we can do a better job.
And lastly, I just want to give you and the Health Department employees kudos for your response with Ebola. You know, we, we hear a lot about the biocontainment unit, but really without the Health Department, it wouldn't have worked. And so, you guys did a fantastic job. You're still doing a fantastic job. And you're doing what health departments are supposed to do, and so we appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. With that, we'll move to the committees, the first being the Finance, a budget report from the Chairs, anything?
We'll plan that right after this meeting, maybe we'll take, I'm not sure if we have an executive session, but maybe 15 minutes after the meeting, we can meet in 9:03. Public Properties. And the other one is Civil Service, is it? And Joe will do it then. So, that's what we'll be doing in case the Commissioners can join us, great.
All right, great. Next committee is Human Resources, and it's the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented, if there are no questions or comments. Item two, Weekly CAO Report on Staff Assaults.
Nothing to report.
And then Legislative Issues, you have the report in your binders. I will report one. Dr. Foxall and I went to testify yesterday on our bill 341 that would provide private insurance to maintain the insurance for individuals that were brought into our facilities and up until the time of sentence, so that there could be a reimbursement to the counties on their medical costs that are incurred in our facilities. And the hearing went very well. They asked a lot of good questions, and so we hope that that will be moved forward. Next, nothing else on legislative unless someone else has something? Commissioner Rogers?
I know we're going to get to a point, Madam Chair, and I want to bring it up, I guess to be on, next time we meet, wherever the legislature will be at, taking studies. And I want to bring up two. One is a meeting that I had yesterday at Luther Family Services' new location over on about 43rd and Ford. Interesting discussion is, they had about mental health regulations, and I didn't know. And I wanted to know if we could propose a study in regards to unifying regulation to see what the benefit was. I know in Iowa, they said that they do it, but here I didn't know that, you know, for instance, they were saying there's certain requirements, they have to probation and other pieces. And I'd like to propose that study to see if there was some unifying, to see what we may be missing compared to like Iowa that has a unified regulation piece. And the second piece I'd like to throw out there is, we've thought about a couple of years, but I'd like to put it on the record for them to do a study on home rural counties. I know most states have the same battle that we have, where, whether Chicago or Cook, Oregon and Modanoma, where they have a special piece for home rural counties because of the gravity of the issues that the bigger counties may deal with. And I'd like to just put that down as a proposed study for when we get there. Thank you.
All right, we have note of those. There's one other item, the consideration of whether to engage in an RFP process for the county's health insurance consultant or extend the current contract with Aon. So, Patrick, do you want to give us a brief synopsis of that again? And we did have a committee meeting on this as well.
Yes, this item was discussed at the Tuesday, March 3 HR Committee Meeting. The copy of the minutes from that meeting are attached to this item. The current contract with our health insurance benefits consultant, Aon, expires June 15 of this year. We are finishing up four years with Aon. It was a three-year contract initially, and then the Board last year extended it for one year. The decision the Board will need to make going forward is, should, or does the Board want to RFP it and get some proposals in or enter into another contract period with Aon? If the Board decides it wants to RFP it, I would ask that you do so today, so Diane Carlson and I can draft the RFP and get it out on the street as soon as possible.
Okay. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, I am a proponent of going out for an RFP. And the reason is, frankly, money. I think when we do that, we have professional companies, and I think what it does, it makes them sharpen their pencils. When I was Chair of the committee that dealt with health insurance, one of the things that I did was, I told United Healthcare, they had to drop their percentages, what they were charging us, and they did, and it saved us a substantial amount of money. Obviously, they have to build in profit, but in, but in the United States of America, we have competition. It's free enterprise. And I think we ought to let it work. So, I'd like to see us go out and see if we, first of all, can let the free enterprise system work, let them come back with providing us with a service that meets our needs, and at the same time saves the taxpayers money. I think we can do it. We ought to at least look at it. We can always choose to go back to, or to choose Aon. This is not a slap in the face to them, they're an excellent firm. We are so fortunate to have, you know, the companies that we do here in Omaha that can step up and give us this guidance. So, I really would like to see us do an RFP for that purpose. I'll make that a motion.
Any other questions or comments on this? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Kim Lobato. I'm a Senior Vice President with Aon. And I was not at the last meeting, so I'd just like to make a couple of comments. I'm the original person that was originally responsible for submitting our last proposal. And I just, with regard to Mr. Boyle's comments, a couple of things I would like to mention. You know, in our industry, we, we work very hard. We do a lot of public entity work with Aon across the country and here in our Omaha office. I'm personally involved with a couple of states, number of other cities and counties and so forth. And just for some information, and I'm not trying to influence the direction of the, of the decision on the RFP or not, but with regard to private sector and the comparison, our fee with Douglas County is $35,020 as of last June. And the way that we look at that and compare against other companies is to look at the number of people that are on the plan and so forth. And there's 2,092 people on the plan. So, on a per employee, per month basis, that's $1.39. And to give you a comparison to what happens in the, in the private sector, we just recently did a study for did a study for another client that wanted to know how does their fee compare, you know, just to give you a basis of comparison. In the average of our top accounts, our top 10 accounts, that average per employee, per month number was $10.40. So, you know, one of, our commitment to public sector is that we really do do it at a loss, in a sense, from a, from a compensation standpoint, because we do have a commitment to the community and the communities in which we operate. And, you know, for the fee that is being charged, you know, I do think that the, the county is getting a good value for that, and we have done a lot of work for the county. And just want to give you the information as a basis of a comparison to what's going on in the private sector. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Mr. Libato, I couldn't agree with you more that, you know, the services you provide is excellent, and Tracy does a wonderful job. She's on the spot, she answers questions. We had a, just, I think I'm right on this, I'll find out if I'm not, but I think when we talked about doing the survey of asking our employees who is on their insurance policy, which has just now come out, I was at a meeting, and I'm not bashful about this, and so I, whatever the fee was that was being asked for by Aon was, I thought, a little bit too high. So, I asked it to be reduced, and dang it, if it wasn't, I think. So, not by a lot of money, but enough so that it was, you know, come down a little bit, and Tracy got it done. So, I mean, I don't have any problem with that. And like I said, we are so fortunate, I believe that's what happened, we are so fortunate to have someone like her, but we also have a lot of talent at Silverstone. And Silverstone also has public bodies that they have worked with. And we kind of bounced back, I think, between the two. It's a lot like, several years ago, we chose United Healthcare over Blue Cross Blue Shield. And those things happen. I mean, it's, we have really terrific providers of all sorts in this city. I mean, just, if you just think about it, it's amazing. So, it's a lot like our medical facilities that are just really second to none. So, this is not, as I said earlier, you know, I think it's just testing free enterprise. Let's see what we come up with. And if you sharpen your pencil and come up with something less, not that it's going to be on dollars only, but it, both, you know, we usually, I mean, professional firms like this, we don't do a lot of bidding. But we have a bill that we got from a law firm recently that's substantially higher than some of us Commissioners thought it was going to be. And that's been laid over to the 24th because we're having a discussion about it. There are a lot of law firms in town, and so, you know, we need to figure out a better way to get good legal service. They're terrific law firms, but some of them kind of sneak up on us a little bit. Not that this firm did, but it surprised some of us on the fees that they, too, did an excellent job. Anyway, all I'm after is, let's see if we get a better price. I'm sorry to go on about this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Kara Kirsch. I'm with Silverstone Group, and I was present at the March 3 HR Committee Meeting. And at that time, I voiced our request for the county to conduct an RFP for the Employee Benefits Consultant. I did not, at the time, really get an opportunity to talk about Silverstone and who we are. But as Commissioner Boyle mentioned, we, too, have public sector business and are committed to the public sector. The city of Omaha is one of our clients. And we have over 200 people here in Nebraska who are serving our clients every day, and we would be excited to serve the county as well. I also wanted to just mention that it's our position that we believe it's in the best interest of the taxpayers of Douglas County to look at this and determine if there's an alternative that could save the county money. So, I just wanted to make sure that our voice was heard today and encourage the county to vote in favor of an RFP for the Employee Benefits Consultant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? There is a motion on the floor and a second. Please vote.
Thank you very much.
With that, we do not have need for an executive session. But before we, could we figure out what you were doing over there? We do have a Finance Committee Meeting, as Commissioner Morgan said, will begin probably in about 20 minutes, up in room 903. Please note that there, we will not meet on Tuesday, March 17. So, our next scheduled meeting is March 24. And then, just as a reminder, and we'll remind you again, but the presentation of a Live Inside with a post-film panel discussion, one night only, Tuesday, March 24 at 7:00 PM at Film Streams. And this was the presentation by the Douglas County Health Center Foundation, and they're sponsoring the production. So, also, oh, that's it, I guess. So, motion to adjourn? Please vote. Oops, I said, no, wait. There we go. Yeah. There we go. Now I have to go eat.
America, America, God shed his grace on thee. And round thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea.